Under order.
Tonight, our invoker will be Commissioner Hall and, excuse me, Commissioner Cook will lead us in the pledge. If you'd all please stand.
Bow your head. Lord, as we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good, we recognize our responsibility to the past and future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well, in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the predilections.
Predilections to the flag, government of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands on a nation under God, in his rule, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. The roll call, please.
Commissioners Diana Cook.
Yes.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Cassandra Harvey.
Present.
Raj Morley.
Yes.
Davian Terciano.
Here.
Vice Chairman Dan Jacobs. Chairman James Vos.
Sir.
We have a question.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes each. If we have any early speakers, Mr. Lutowski?
No early speakers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Then any person who would like to address the commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item that you'd like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the planning commission at such time the commission takes up the matter. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the council chambers and here on your right, my left, next to Deputy City Attorney, Mr. Adams. Individual speakers would be limited to three minutes each. Our first item is our consent calendar, which is an approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 16, 2012. Have a motion, please.
I move that we accept the minutes of the April 16 meeting, 2012.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Well, I'm in trouble now. I think Vice Chair Jacob stole my agenda. Oh, thanks. This is my agenda. Since this is your last meeting, Dan, could have a little fun. New public hearings tonight. The first new public hearing is on conditional use permit 11-10, which is a review of the conditional use permit at a six-month review. We have received for the record and a letter indicating, no, we have not. It's not an uncontested hearing, I'm sorry. We'll hear a staff report. This is a little confusing, isn't it? See what happens when he steals my agenda?
In November of 2011, Tulli Hall Fakir for Industry Theater came before you for a conditional use permit to operate a concert venue nightclub with on-sale consumption of alcohol beverages. One of the condition was to review the status of the operation of this business six months after the approval of the original CUP. The short staff report that was provided for you states that Industry Theater, for the most part, has not received any complaints within the six-month period. The sheriff's department was called to the site for minor routine calls, but beyond that, nothing major. So, they also have not yet received an ABC license for the sale of alcohol. So, since they haven't been selling alcohol, we're not able to review the impact of that on the business. And with that, staff recommends that we receive and file the report. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Tulli is also in the audience. Thanks.
All right, thank you. There may be some questions. Thank you for the report. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Do we need a motion to receive and file a report?
That would be appropriate, I believe, unless someone has. Anyone have any questions before we consider a motion? Nope, no questions, all right. So, if someone will offer a motion to receive and file the report?
I'll make a motion that we receive and file a report for conditional use permit 11-10.
Thank you. You have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote. Thank you. The next item is another review of conditional use permit number 10-28. This is for the venue, the main event. So, could we have a brief staff report on that as well? Thank you.
A year ago, in April 2011, you reviewed the main event located on 731 West Lancaster Boulevard. It's also a use to operate, it's a use to operate a banquet facility for private catering events with the sale of alcohol. And this is in downtown along the boulevard. Similar to Tulli's, they have not been issued an ABC license, and so they have not been selling alcohol at this establishment. They've had events throughout the course of the last year, although speaking with Crystal Neal, the applicant of this, for this business, right now, the events have been occasional and mostly as on a reserve basis, say for birthday parties. So, they really even, they really have not had any large events to the scale as initially proposed. I invited Crystal Neal to be here tonight, although she declined. She said she doesn't want to go through that again. But, uh, but we don't have any major complaints. We checked the sheriff's department, and they've received three calls for this address, one regarding illegal parking, two for burglary alarms, but nothing that is considered significant. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission receive and file the report. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff? Have no speaker cards on this matter?
No speaker cards on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. So, a motion would be in order to receive and file a report?
I make a motion that we receive and file a report for conditional use permit number 10-28.
Second that. Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next hearing is on conditional use permit 12-10. This is an application for, or to add live entertainment on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturday evenings, and to add an alcohol beverage control type 47 license on sale general for a bona fide restaurant in a CPD zone, Papa's Place. So, the public hearing is open on this matter. Do we have any speakers on this item, Mr. Lutowski?
No speaker's cards on this item, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Having technical difficulties a little? So, if you'd give us a brief staff report, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
This is a CUP to add live entertainment on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM, and to add alcohol beverage control type 47, that's on sale general for a bona fide restaurant in a CPD zone. The location is 1525 West Avenue K. It's the, it's the building adjacent to the freeway on-ramp next to the Carl's Juniors. I believe it used to be Pit Stop Grill. It's been vacant for a while. The applicant, Papa's Place, intends to occupy this building for a barbecue restaurant, but in addition to the barbecue restaurant, entertainment uses for Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. Staff has drafted the conditions to ensure that the entertainment use would be, would provide a safe environment. Some of the conditions include that the entertainment use on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings be limited to those 21 years of age and older. But we've also asked them to make, to ensure that the facility continues to serve food so that it may also operate as a bona fide restaurant. There are other conditions in the staff report that pertain to security, hours of operation, all in a effort, all in an effort to make sure that the entertainment use do not become a nightclub use that sometimes may have negative impacts around, on the surrounding or adjacent uses. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve CUP number 12-10. I believe the applicant is in the audience, should you have any questions.
Very good, thank you. Do we have any speaker cards on this item, Mr. Lutowski?
No, I do not have any.
Right. The applicant would have an opportunity to present anything they wish?
The president answered the questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The president answered the questions. There are any questions?
I have some questions, so maybe, maybe you can introduce yourself, sir, and we'll have a little visit.
Right.
Good evening, and you are?
I'm Michael Hill.
Good evening, Mr. Hill.
Good evening.
Thank you for indulging us. The conditions in this conditional use permit application are somewhat extensive, based in part on experience we've had in the community with operations that didn't necessarily follow the rules. I just want to be sure you understand all the conditions that have been enumerated here, and that you're in full agreement, and you're on the record in agreeing to all the conditions.
Yes, in fact, my experience will speak to the fact why it is so extensive, that there are so many conditions, because it's a heavy responsibility with controlling, you know, many different individuals that might consume alcohol. The fact of the matter is, they have to be watched constantly, and that's a heavy responsibility. But my experience will allow me, you know, to effectively do that, you know, along with the training that we will provide for our employees, and along with our higher standard of operation.
Very good.
Thank you.
You know, it's one of the conditions does not allow the operator to rent or lease or a venue or an entertainment venue that has to be, in other words, you couldn't rent it out to some production company or a producer or some other individual and, and give away your supervision, and that's, that's one of the things we're very concerned about.
Correct, and I believe we addressed that condition, and that condition asks for a, for permission from the city. I contacted planning, and they assured me that there was no procedure for, for asking for permission, because the, the condition clearly states that you can have that type of, of operation, but you have to have permission from the city, so I wanted to-
And you've been, you've been in the food business for some time, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Some failed, some successes, but I'm still standing.
Always 100% successful, right?
Yes, sir.
Someone else may have some questions, I'm not sure. Anyone?
You're the same proprietor of the Papa's that was on Avenue L, correct?
Yes, yes.
Glad to see you back.
Glad to be back.
Uh, any, um-
Well, I'm back.
Yeah. Any plans to do any exterior TI improvements to that location?
Yes, the, the property owner has agreed to paint the exterior of the facility. He's gonna install all of my signage. He's already made some upgrades to the landscape, as you see there, of course, to make it a little bit more appealing to the public. He's very concerned about the signage. He, he always thought that there was a, a signage issue, it wasn't visible enough, so he's very, very intuitive into putting more signage around the building. So, we're looking at putting signage both on the south side of the building, the west side of the building, which faces the freeway, and also the east side of the building. One of the things that we're still working out the kink on is where we're gonna put my massive grill, but I might be able to work around that. Thank you. You're welcome, sir.
You do understand there's a process you have to go through to secure the, the sign permits and, and sizes and locations, so you want to make sure you coordinate that before you go out and spend a lot of money on a sign that-
Yes, sir, I've already-
Make sure it meets the requirements.
Right, I've already made contact with the contractor, so they've done business with the city of Lancaster on me and-
We'll try to stay out of your pocket as much as we can.
Yeah, please do.
That's all I have. Anyone have anything? Mr. Hall?
You said that the city didn't have a procedure for special events application?
Yes, sir.
Um, it says on condition number 24 that it is required for any event that exceeds the entertainment request that is outlined. So, that's a good question for staff. Is there a procedure for that?
Yes, we do have procedures for that.
So, could we give him a copy of that, so he'll have it?
Yes, I'll have Chun work with him, so he's aware of what, what happens. But we do, we do have a requirement and a process to go through to make sure that, you know, parking and emergency access and all those kinds of things are available if there's a special event of some kind.
That's all, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to hosting you all.
Good luck. All right then, so without objection, we'll close the public hearing and consider a motion on this matter.
I move that we adopt resolution number 12-11, approving conditional use permit number 12-10.
Second that. Thank you, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Good luck, Mr. Hill. The next public hearing item is an amendment to Development Agreement 89-01. The applicant in this case is Delsir Greenworks LLC. We have received an uncontested letter, but there are likely some questions from members, so, Mr. Lutowski, if you'd give us an outline of what's before us? Thank you.
I'll, I'll try to be as brief as I can explaining this, but it is a, a property and development agreement, actually with some history. So, bear with me as I, as I take you through this. Development Agreement number 8901 is the item that's before you this evening, and it's a request to amend that development agreement to allow certain actions to occur. This is the area that we're talking about, and I will point out to you here that there are two colors that you see on this map. One is a blue and one is a green. Now, the amendment that you're being asked to consider tonight would only affect this portion that's in blue. However, the green that you see here is also historically a part of this overall project, and I want to give you some background as to why we've gotten to the point that we've gotten, and why you see this, this kind of split between these two areas. Development Agreement 8901 is, is a contract essentially that was approved by the city council, and I'll go through the history of this shortly, in 1990. And what that contract does is it basically grants the applicant, the owner of the property in this case, what are called vested rights. And vested rights are rights that, that they have that mean that they can proceed with what they were approved to do, and the city doesn't have the right to change the rules on them. Now, that's an important thing to understand, because that's part of the reason that the whole thing is in front of you tonight. And in exchange for getting those vested rights, the applicant, property owner, back in 1990, agreed to give to the city certain things that the city might not otherwise be able to get under the normal rules that govern development and review and conditioning of projects in the state of California. Development agreements are governed by state law, so there are parameters in the Planning, Zoning, and Development Code in the state of California that outline development agreements and how they're to be dealt with. And as I pointed out in the last bullet point, what Development Agreement 8901 allows is that that original residential project that was approved, eight, approximately 2,700 single-family residential units, along with parks, commercial sites, some school sites, a fire station site, is allowed to be built in accordance with subsequent modifications that occurred, but that development agreement essentially continues to vest those rights to that property owner even now. I'll give you a brief rundown on the history of this. As I said, back in 1990, the development agreement was originally approved by the city council. It had an original term of 10 years, along with what were called, or what are called tolling provisions. In other words, if the applicant met certain conditions before that 10 years was up, they were entitled to a couple of automatic extensions. So, overall, the, the potential term of the development agreement was 16 years from the time of 1990. So, you're looking 1990 into potentially 2006. I don't need to remind any of you who are here what the environment for development of residential projects was like in the early 1990s. The applicant's best intentions aside, nothing happened on the property. There were some provisions of the agreement that the city and the applicant argued a little bit about. There was also a change made in the project that incorporated some additional amenities. But by 1996, it became apparent that there was a need to amend the development agreement, and it was amended by agreement with the city council and the applicant, and the term was extended to 2002 for that agreement. And in exchange for getting that extension, the applicant agreed to give to the city some concessions on additional impact fees that weren't in the original agreement and approval. In 2000, the applicant undertook a fairly major revision to the project that involved need, a necessity to change some of the zoning designations and to redo the map that was done for the project. The city agreed to that in exchange for getting additional parkland dedication that was actually off the site, as well as some additional contributions to off-site roadways that were not in the original agreement. And as a part of that agreement, amendment, the term of the agreement was extended to the year 2010. Two years later, it was extended to 2012. Now, in 2005 and 2006, there were a couple of important things that happened, and that's why you now have this split on what was once an original 880-acre project. In 2005, 650 acres of the, of the project site, the core area, the area that was in blue on the map that you are being asked to deal with this evening, was sold to Standard Pacific Corporation, a company that intended to pursue some modifications and to develop a master-planned community, as they saw master-planned communities of the middle 2000s. And they actually ultimately did get the approval to do that, and that approval changed the, the nature of what had to be built on that core area. The remaining 230 acres, the little areas that were in green to the south and to the, to the east, were also sold off, this to a, a limited liability corporation. In 2007, recognizing the change in the, in the housing market and the economy, Standard Pacific returned that core area, that 650 acres, back to the original applicant. The remaining area that had been sold off did not return back to the applicant. That instead went into a receivership to another company, and you're actually at some point going to probably be hearing from them also. In 2010, the applicant of the 650, the holder of the 650 acres approached the city and said, "There are terms in the development agreement that allow an extension of time to be granted for performance in the event of a severe economic situation." That was persuasive enough that the city ultimately granted an extension to the year 2018 for that 650 acres, but that same type of discussion never occurred on the balance. So, what you now have, and we'll go back to this map, is you have a development agreement that expires on October the 17th of 2012 in these green areas, and expires in October 17th of 2018 in the blue area, the area that you're dealing with. And the expiration of that development agreement is important, because remember, what the agreement is, is that the city doesn't change the rules, and the applicant gets to proceed with the project as approved, as long as that development agreement is in force and So, why are we here tonight, and why is the, the request being made for the, for the This site, while it may not be a great site at this point in time for residential development, is perceived by Silverado or Delsir Greenworks LLC, they're one and the same, as a very good site for solar development. But the existing approvals and the existing zoning that is on the site does not allow for solar development. So, what they have come before you requesting is that the development agreement be amended to allow them to file an application for the development of commercial solar facilities on that 650 acres. It does not guarantee that they would get approval. It still requires that they go through the normal city review process, and they comply with the- with the California Environmental Quality Act process, which in this case will demand that they do an environmental impact report for that. The other thing that's very important, and it goes back to what I said before, this amendment would not alter the existing vested right approvals that exist on the property. So if the development agreement is amended, you essentially would continue to have the vested rights and the approval of the residential project that has been in place for quite a while, but would also grant the ability for someone to make a request and get an approval through the CUP process for those commercial electrical generation facilities. And that's a very important thing from the original applicant's standpoint because their concern is that they would not want an action to be taken that takes away their vested rights, and then for some reason their agreement with this applicant or some future solar developer did not go through, and essentially they would still hold the land but no longer have any of the vested rights and the development approvals that they've held. So that is the reason that this is really in front of you right now. There are a couple of other things, though, that I think you need to also be aware of. If the project site is approved for solar development and that solar project actually begins physical construction, in other words, not simply an approval, but actual physical work begins to install this facility, the city would get the right through its normal process to amend the general plan and the zoning designations on the site to non-urban and rural residential, which are the typical designations that we allow solar facilities in. So if a solar project is approved and construction of it begins, the city has the right to essentially take actions to remove the underlying residential entitlements that have been on the property for some twenty-two years now. So that's another important component, and right now the city does not have that ability. It cannot alter the land use or the zoning on the site without the consent in the agreement of that property owner because of the way the contract is set up through this development agreement. And as I've noted to you, the land use and zoning changes would terminate the existing development approvals on the property. So in summary, what you're being requested to do is to make a recommendation on whether it's a good idea to allow someone through the amendment of the development agreement to file for a development of a solar project on the site, recognizing that they have to go through all of the normal procedures and environmental clearances, and at the same time keep in place the existing residential development approvals so that the applicant or the landowner in this case does not lose those vested rights as someone goes through the process of determining whether the city will allow solar energy facilities. However, if that approval is ultimately granted and that applicant or somebody else actually physically begins construction of a solar facility, the city does get the right to re-designate and re-zone the property in a manner that's consistent with what we require in general for solar projects. And of course, from our standpoint, this is a reasonably good area to allow solar development in. We have approved a number of other solar projects out in this general area, and the facilities such as the substations and the lines that can tie into those are readily available. So that's a summary. I hope that it was clear enough for a project and a development agreement that's been around a long time, but that is really the issue that's before you tonight. And I think it's important to recognize that the choice is ultimately the existing approval or the development of the site for solar, but development of the site for solar isn't an option unless the development agreement is amended to allow that type of application to proceed. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Yes?
If that moved through and the project started a solar development out there, would they still also be able to mix it with residential, or would it become either-or?
The intent of the city is that it would be either-or, and that's the reason that this provision that's up here was put in at the request actually of the city. So that if we approve the site for a commercial solar facility, the intent is that the city is going to go in and then, once construction begins on that solar facility, we will go in, change the general plan and land use to take away the ability to do the residential project. So I understand the concern you have, and that's the same concern we had. You don't want this kind of mixed thing where part of it goes here and part of it stays that and so forth.
My question would be, so the city was guaranteed certain amenities?
Yes.
And if it does go with the solar and it gets granted and construction starts, those amenities are not going to be done?
Yes, those amenities would go away. I don't think that's a big issue because those amenities really were intended for the benefit of that, of those residents in that residential project.
So in twenty years, if they decided to pull their panels back out, would the agreement still be?
No. If at that point someone were to decide, if they had constructed a solar facility, operated it for a period of time, and then gave that up, and somebody wanted to come back and look at the site for residential development or basically any other kind of development not allowed under the rural residential classification, they would need to start over and go through the process again.
In the amendment to the development agreement, and if I ask a couple of questions, I want to thank you for providing us with all of the background and the original development agreement and the amendments thereto, including the last one, which was an administrative amendment.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. In the matters before us, there are some folks who had, I don't know if it was a vested right, but they certainly had an interest in the development of this property for school sites, for instance, Westside Union School District, Antelope Valley Joint Union High School District. I know you've given public notice as required by law for this project. Anybody interacted with those folks? Are they aware of this?
No, we have not at this point on the development agreement itself. However, if the development agreement is amended and the applicant begins their process of requesting a solar project, we would, of course, then involve all of those agencies in those areas in the EIR process because, for instance, Westside School District has a school that's pretty close to where those facilities would go in, and they would get an opportunity through that to comment or weigh in on whether the loss of the residential project would have some kind of an effect on them from how they expected to provide services or other types of things.
Yeah, no question it would. Under the current state school facilities program, their future funding is based on approved maps, so it would take twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty lots out of the equation for both Westside as well as Antelope Valley. It's a substantial hit. However, if dwellings aren't built, there is no student yield, so there's no need to build classrooms, so anyway. In the agreement, on page two, paragraph five, talks about the city shall have the unilateral right. It doesn't say unilateral right, it will unilaterally change the general plan, land use designation. I've never seen that in an agreement, at least in my limited experience. And then in paragraph six, it says, "Nothing in the agreement shall amend or modify or change the existing approvals in any manner whatever," but that's what we're doing. So I'm having a little trouble with the language. Now maybe you can help me out.
Yes. The term unilateral, because of the contract nature of the agreement, normally nothing can happen on the land or in any other way unless both parties agree to it. In this particular case, what we are asking is that should they begin physical construction of a solar facility, the city has the right to change the zoning and the general plan, essentially without the consent of that owner. You know, in other words, they wouldn't have to give their consent to it.
Aren't solar uptake projects required to be cited either in a urban, non-urban residential or industrial, commercial-type land use?
Yes.
By our current regulation?
Yes.
So unless we modify those, an applicant coming before us for that type of use would have to accept a general plan revision and a zone change to get their CUP approved? As a matter of policy, wouldn't it?
Under normal circumstances, yes.
So what you're saying in this case is that if an applicant comes forward for a PV use, it will not also contain a general plan amendment or a zone change? That would happen after the CUP?
It would happen after the CUP.
And that's really odd.
It is odd, but it speaks to the nature of trying to ensure that the existing entitlements, and I'll talk to number six a little bit after that, do not go away in that process. That was a major concern of the existing landowner.
They make a deal, they don't want it back.
Correct. Number six, on existing approvals, existing approvals essentially refers to the project that is already there. And so that, the intent of this language is really to say that by going through and amending the development agreement, none of the existing entitlements are affected
So they have to, and I don't recall what the, off the top of my head, what the terminology is in entitling a conditional use permit, but it's substantial construction in effect?
Yes.
So, you know, three-quarters of an acre in a PV farm wouldn't be sufficient to trigger the unilateral change, huh?
Well... Yeah, I would say that in this particular case, though, if there's a reasonable expectation that the commencement of that physical construction is part of that larger effort, that that would in fact justify the change.
Okay. Now, we noticed that applicant is Del Sur Greenworks LLC, but the agreement is with Del Sur Ranch LLC, which are different entities.
That's correct.
So we're considering an application to amend an agreement that we don't have an agreement or an approval of, a predetermined approval of the conditions. So is somebody from Del Sur Ranch here that can tell us they agree to this?
There is a representative present, and I think it's an appropriate question to draw to them.
I'd feel more comfortable if it was in the record because the letter we have and the application is not from the owner, but the agreement before us is from the owner.
Yes.
Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to be sure that everybody's on the same...
No, you're correct. The owner would ultimately have to be the signer of the amendment.
Right. I mean, I don't suppose for a minute that all of this effort to bring it to this point, that interaction hasn't taken place, but I'd like to hear it. So maybe others may have a question, I don't know. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have speakers on this, Mr. Ludiki? Well, we can hear from the applicant, certainly if they're here.
We do have one speaker's card also that's not the...
Okay. If the applicant's here, would they like, care to address us?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Alex Barlow. I'm representative of Del Sur Ranch LLC. We are the owner of the property. I think there's, I'm not sure how this is going to be resolved if, I believe we would be the applicant, even though we're working for Del Sur Ranch LLC or El Sur Ranch Greenworks since we're the owner of the property. But as the owner of the property, we have been in correspondence with the city and with Del Sur Ranch Greenworks, and we're agreeing with the action being before you tonight. We've also reviewed the development agreement amendments, and we feel comfortable with the language and with the intent.
So, Mr. Barlow, let me see if I got this straight. You executed the last agreement on behalf of Del Sur Ranch LLC?
Correct.
Okay. Senior Vice President, that's you?
Correct.
But you're not Del Sur Greenworks LLC, or you are?
We're not.
You're not?
I'm not. We're not. Correct.
All right. But as a representative of Del Sur Ranch LLC, the matters before us today, which I'm assuming if it's, if we recommend it to the city council and they approve it, you'll be executing it?
That is correct.
Okay, and you're comfortable with that? You don't see any problem with it?
We do not.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. And do we have anyone else? Evening, you are, sir?
My name is Garrett Bean. I work with Silverado Power, and Del Sur Greenworks is a subsidiary of Silverado Power. So I just wanted to introduce myself. We've spoken before on some of our other solar projects, but we've also gone through the agreement, worked very hard with the planning staff, with Alex and his team, and we're comfortable with the language as well, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
And we have another speaker?
Yes, Robert McCorkle.
Evening, Mr., is it McCorkle?
Yes, he did. Very good. It's unusual, somebody gets it right.
I hope I don't mess it up.
You did fine.
Good evening, welcome.
I don't know that I'm so much a speaker as, we were, we own one of the properties adjacent to this property, and so I had some questions that I wanted to find out, and it specifically said we had to ask now or don't ever ask. So here I am to ask. If you were to put a solar site at this location, would it affect any of the adjacent properties in their current zoning, or what would be allowed to be put on those buildings, on those properties? For example, you could currently put a three-story building there, would that reduce that because of the shading potential impacts on the solar panels? And then the other thing is, when you start dealing with the solar panels and things like that, there are chemicals and things, if there was a failure of the facility, we would be responsible for making sure that the adjacent properties weren't negatively impacted by any chemicals being introduced into the groundwater or whatever possibly passing from one facility to another.
All right, and those are your only questions?
Those are the only questions I have.
Okay. I'll ask Mr. Ludiki to comment on those or...
I can...
Someone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I can comment on the first one, probably not the second one. On the first one, this action would not affect any of the existing land use or zoning designations that are on the adjacent properties. They would remain as they are now.
He mentioned something about shading, but typically have setbacks sufficient from property lines that would...
Yes.
Likely not impact.
Given the height limits within the rural residential zone, which is the zone that surrounds most of this, and I would also say part of this area surrounding is actually in the county, so I'm not sure I can even speak if his property's in the county. I don't know exactly where it is. But within our rural residential zone, I think the height limit is like forty feet, if I remember correctly, and by the time you have your hundred-foot rights of way of roadways and setbacks and things, I don't think there would be a shading issue.
There was some comment regarding potential chemical impacts.
To answer that question, we will be responsible for our development and everything that's going on with it. As far as hazardous chemicals and materials, the solar PV facility that we're proposing or will be proposing, if this is to go through, does not use significant hazardous or chemical materials. But everything that we do will be constructed within, with, under the proper permits and review of design from the fire department, from the engineers, to make sure nothing like that happens. So it's very, very limited in hazardous materials on sites, on oils and whatnot, but other than that, the PV facilities do not contain significant-
Do you view this use, this potential proposed use as a holding use?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
Say, do you perceive this potential proposed use as a holding land use?
As a holding land use?
20-year life, 25-year life, something like that?
As far as, I'm not sure if I'm answering this accurately, but completely understanding your question, but as far as the proposed use, we've evaluated the feasibility of the site. If this were to go through, we would be filing a conditional use permit.
You know, I understand all, no, I think you missed my point. It's a potential proposed use. The proposed use is not before us.
Correct.
It might be.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a potential of the use. And a PV farm, if you will, has a shelf life of maybe, what, 20, 25 years?
Yeah.
So would you see that as potentially holding the land for that purpose over the shelf life of the installation of the PV farm? And potentially then developing it sometime in the future for some other residential use?
No, this would be intended only as a PV use and construction.
Forever, huh?
Forever.
Boy, you've got a, I hope you live that long.
I don't think I will, but.
Okay. Thank you. I think we, have we responded to the questions, Mr. Ludicki?
I believe those were the applicant's questions, or not the applicant, the citizen's questions.
All right. Okay. Do we have any other speakers?
I have no other cards, Mr. Sherman.
All right, then. It'd be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number 12-12 recommending to the city council approval of an ordinance amending development agreement number 89-01 AM to allow for the development of commercial-scale photovoltaic solar facilities with a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Informational, we expect, we don't know the exact date yet. It will be in front of the city council on either the June 12th or June 26th meeting, but we're not certain which one yet.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Under new business, we have the introduction of the residential zone update. You're ready to be introduced. Introduce away.
The residential zones update is coming before you as a new business item as opposed to a public hearing. Next month in June, it will come before as a public hearing. In the meantime, I have prepared a PowerPoint presentation that will provide a background for the residential zones update and kind of the intention of the revision. I included this slide because the documents that have been previously approved by the city, including the downtown Lancaster specific plan, general plan 2030, design guidelines, and the master plan of chosen bike ways, they have all, they're all documents that have indicated a direction that the city wants to move in as far as planning is concerned. And for each of these documents, the city has conducted extensive public outreach, and what we've heard from the residents are that they want what we call livable communities. They want, they have an expectation for quality housing developments. So this is really, you know, the draft residential zones, it follows the same direction as these previous documents. And you've seen the results of some of these documents, you know, with the downtown specific plan, you know, we have the boulevard. And hopefully, in the near future, with the master plan of chosen bike ways, we will see that implemented as well in terms of community amenities. The purpose of the residential zone is to provide standards for orderly development and to ensure land use compatibility. It's also intended to protect and promote health, safety, and welfare, and to implement general plan goals and policies. This is a, you know, this is part of the city zoning map. What's the yellow? The yellow are the city's urban residential uses. There's a lot of it. About 70% of the land within the city limits are zoned for residential. So this is an update of an ordinance that covers approximately two-thirds of the land within the city. And this is what we have now as a common standard for residential development. When somebody comes in and they want to build housing, we basically give them this and tell them to stay within the dotted lines. And when we ask them to do that, this is kind of what we get. They stay within the dotted lines, and it kind of looks the same over and over again. Here's another picture showing existing residential development. This is, you know, characterized as what we call cookie cutter. And you can see it, you know, for each of the lot, you have a residential structure that looks exactly like the one adjacent to it. Here's another residential development on larger lots. Larger lots are great for people that want space, but as you can see, there's also underutilization of land. People have a lot of backyard space, but, you know, they're not always fully utilized. This is a picture of an existing subdivision that was built probably in the late 80s, 88, 89, and these type of monotonous developments don't age very well. Here's a more recent development. This is a little bit better. I mean, you can see some facade improvements of the fake shutters and, but, you know, it has a porch. But so, but here's another picture of an existing house in the city limits. Where's the, where's the front entrance? It's hard to tell, you know. Based on this image, you can see where, what's considered important to a resident as far as a house is concerned. You know, it's access to the garage. It's, this is a very, this is a garage dominant appearance. Here's a multifamily example. This looks like a place where you don't want to be at, at night. So is this one. The design quality of this multifamily development is poor. There are no, you know, as you can see, there's hardly any landscaping as far as the building architecture is concerned. The quality is lacking. You don't see windows or, or that the windows are facing in directions that doesn't really give the street a lot of appeal. So why update the code? We need to clean it up. We need to eliminate obsolete sections. We need to update it so that it reflects the desire of Lancaster residents for livable communities. We need to update it because of changing conditions, and I'll elaborate on that a little bit more. But most of all, we want to allow for greater flexibility. We want to get away from the cookie cutter stuff, but give builders some tools to come up with different housing products. As far as changing conditions are concerned, we're still, you know, coming out of an economic recession. Gas prices are still rising, so, you know, there's, there's a need to create communities that is not just automobile-dependent, you know, neighborhoods where kids can walk to school, things like that. There's limited water capacity, and currently, our housing development's set up where there's a lot of strain on infrastructure and resources. Some of these changes are here to stay, but we really need a change in our land use pattern so that we have, you know, what we call sustainable, livable communities. I'm going to show you some pictures of proposed examples. These are examples of other communities that have implemented some of the things that we want to see in our community. This is Daybreak in South Jordan, Utah. This is an aerial photo. You can see some of the amenities in this community. There's a lake to the left, there's a cultural center to the right, and you can see some of the street connections, and they're all linked, they're all tied together. There's a school to the north, and, you know, if you lived in one of these communities, you're no more than a couple blocks away from these amenities. So, you know, if you lived here, you don't necessarily have to drive to these destinations. You can go on a walk and enjoy these amenities. Up close, you can see the trail going through the neighborhood. This is, this doesn't look like what you would see here, but they've designed it in a way where if you step out of your front door, you can get on the walking trail. If you look at this intersection here, there are some corner bulbouts. You know, these features emphasize the pedestrian friendliness of this community. You know, the, you can see the stripes indicating where a pedestrian can cross, so there's a greater awareness of pedestrians in this community. These are some on-the-ground photos. You can see that they have connections to pocket parks, open space, things that people can enjoy immediately outside their front steps. This is an example of some, of the architecture that's in the community. This picture looks similar to the one I just showed you, but it's actually of a different use. If you look at this one, it actually has two front doors, as opposed to this one with one front door, because this is a duplex that mimics a single-family home. So what this shows is that there are ways to be creative and innovative in terms of providing different types of housing products, but it can be designed in a way where it integrates into the community. You know, there's sometimes a lot of fear over multifamily products and, but sometimes it's all in design. If you design it right, it can still be an appealing or attractive product. More on-the-ground photos, as you can see, there's a variety of different architecture within the same community. They have porches, balconies. These are the things that we would like to see here in our community. They even have some modern type of architecture. And these are actually single-family homes. And the way that they market this product, you know, is a little bit different than what we expect. They actually try to cater to those that want a livable community here. On their website, it says, "Live closer to your life." It's certainly catering to those that want amenities within their communities. You know, if you go to the website, you can actually choose to find a house that fits your need or that fits your demographic. It says, "Choose a lifestyle." So they have different categories for first timers or, you know, moving up. And then, you know, on the right, you know, you have your housing product for those 55 and older. Here's another example. I picked this one because this, you know, I didn't want to pick examples that were coastal or didn't reflect what we have here. This is another community out in the desert. I mean, it's Arizona, but it's on Gilbert, which is right outside of Phoenix. Here in this aerial photo, you can see a variety of housing products. There are some larger lots to the north. I believe they are 10,000 square foot lots. And then you have some smaller homes to the south. They are on maybe 4,000, 5,000 square foot lots, but they share some open space. In this photo, you can see the connection to the school. There's a school on the south corner there, and you see a park to the north. Again, it's the connectivity that you can see right of way. If you lived in one of these communities, you can easily walk to these destinations. This is a close-up of the smaller homes. Not a lot of backyard space, but they do have some shared community space. Some people like this arrangement. It's not for everybody, but at least it's an option. These are the larger lots. And if you compare this photo to the one of Lancaster a while back, you can see that the folks here have made a good use of the property. It's 10,000 square foot lots, but you can see that the backyard is utilized with either a pool. You can see the garage is detached to the rear that they sometimes can use as a workshop. And so we want to, we want to tailor the draft and craft the draft so that people can make the most use of their property. These are some on-the-ground photos. You don't get that garage dominant feature. In fact, you can hardly see the garage. It's recessed towards the back. Same with this. It sometimes creates a more inviting appearance. You know, you see the steps towards the entrance of the house. Same with this. This is a porch that runs the length of the house. It's certainly a little bit more inviting than the garage dominant look that we have. Here's some examples from Camarillo. These are pictures that Brian took, for examples of some pretty decent and achievable architecture. You know, we're not asking for too much here as far as what they can do with the facade of these structures. You know, it breaks it up, there's some plane changes, you know, there's a porch, and these are what we think pretty achievable things to do for a house. This is a picture of detached garages, and when you locate the garages towards the back, you take it, you take it away from the front, and it creates for a better streetscape. This particular community has a tot lot, and I'd like to mention that this is actually military housing. And people don't think of military housing as having decent architecture, but, you know, if they can do it, then why can't we do it for, you know, the private sector? This is a community garden. Here's another example. This is relatively recent development up in Chico. Again, you see the variety of different housing types. They don't all look the same, and you don't see the garages. Porches, parkways. I included this picture because it has an example of what we call a carriage unit on top of a garage. The garage is located in the back, but you can see the steps leading up to what looks like a small studio. And this is very nice for those, you know, that want to rent out part of, part of the house to maybe a mother-in-law or a college graduate that has not found work. And then we have this example in Palmdale. This is a KB product. It's the vineyards over on 25th East. It's different than the single-family products that we have out here. I think it's a pretty decent development. Again, a tot lot for a community feature. And I want to get into, this is a floor plan. And I want to get into, this is a floor plan that I came across from Lennar. They, they call this a multi-generational product. They're, Lennar is now building houses where you have a built-in studio within the house. So this is a floor plan. As you, as you can see, on the first floor, there's a blue shaded area. The blue shaded area actually has its own entrance off the side. And it's a one-bedroom, one-part bedroom, and has a living area with a kitchenette. This product is designed for those, again, it's the, they call it the multi-generational housing. And it's actually selling very, very well. It's for those that say have grandparents that don't want to be, you know, in a nursing home, but they need some care, but they also want their own kind of semi-independent space. They've, Lennar has come up with a housing product for that situation, for that living arrangement. And it looks like a single-family house. Although you can kind of see the second entrance to the side there is actually kind of interesting. This is the main kitchen in the, in the primary unit. And this is the kitchenette in the studio that's attached to it. Here's another floor plan. You see the first floor and the second floor, and you see that shaded blue area. That shaded blue area, again, is the studio. It's roughly, you know, 500 square feet, 500, 600 square feet. Again, you can use this for a variety of different living arrangements. And I think the builders are sensitive to the needs of, of the buyers out there. If you don't come up with a product like this, or if you don't allow for product like this, people tend to adapt anyway to existing structures. We see two families live in the same single-family structures. So instead of fighting against demographic trends or fighting against what buyers want to do as far as their living arrangements concerned, you know, we should probably just allow builders to build a product that caters to those trends and behaviors. And it still looks like a single-family home from the front. This one has an access off to the side. But you know, this doesn't really negatively impact or degrade the surrounding neighborhood. You still maintain that single-family characteristic. And in most of these living arrangements, you still have the owner on-site for management. You know, and a lot of times, they are related. Again, here's a kitchen for the main unit. Here's a kitchenette for the studio. And this is how they market their product. They call it next-gen, a home within a home, a whole new concept of living space designed to comfortably accommodate your parents, kids who've returned home, or any other dual living arrangement you may have. You know, I don't know about the photo of, you know, people doing a kumbaya with their grandparents, but, but that's what, you know, that's what they're trying to market. You know, it's, you see the multi-generation, and that's what they're trying to cater to. And like I said, there's a great demand for this type of housing product. So in the draft, you know, this is the prototype that we like to see. We're, we're encouraging recessed garages. We like builders to add porches. There's an infill provision in the draft where if you are located in the urban core of the, of the city, we're trying to provide incentives for builders to build in these existing vacant lots that we have in the urban core. And one of these incentives is to allow them to build, to build on smaller lots. So here's the basic outline of a zoning code. You have uses, you have the management of uses, you have development regulations that cover setbacks and lot coverage. You have regulations that, for general site planning features such as parking and landscaping. And then we have standards for specific land uses such as patios, second dwelling units. As far as uses are concerned, we're trying to loosen up the uses a little bit to allow a variety of different products, but at the same time, ensure compatibility. We still have development regulations, but instead of just asking people to stay within the dotted lines, we want to pay attention to the architecture and to the facade. You know, there are qualitative standards for design as well. And there are tools for variety and flexibility. We want to give builders the ability to be creative and innovative. And they can do that by proposing specific plans or master plans or the, or residential plan developments. And there's also the infill provision that will grant them that flexibility. We want them to have the ability to establish unique standards, but it's also an opportunity for the city to trade off, you know, conventional regulations for desired amenities. And in doing that, you know, a lot of times builders, they, they provide what, you know, what we call as the lowest common denominator. They take the rules and provide the cheapest product that they can, that the rules, you know, within the parameters of the rules. And we want, we want to avoid the lowest common denominator. We want it to be compliant with adopted zoning. But the way to do that is, we have to make the findings to ensure that these projects meet our design guidelines, meet the policies of the general plan, and meet the desires of our community residents. You know, development's slow right now, but when they come, when things pick up and you begin to review track maps and RPDs again, you know, it's, it would be your job to, to make those findings and make those recommendations to determine if those projects do meet a certain design quality. And that's, that's the introduction. Again, next month, we will open the public hearing. You will have a formal staff report, and you're welcome to discuss any details of the draft and to bring it to our attention.
Thank you very much. You may have some questions or comments from members?
Sure.
In regards to the RPDs or PUDs, whatever you want to refer to them, are you going to have to make a change to the general plan to fit those developments in, to the general plan?
No, the, the RPD is actually a tool that we have in our existing code. It's not, it hasn't been utilized that much, but the RPD gives builders to propose something different than what our conventional standards would require. For example, conventional standards require that single-family lots be minimum 7,000 square feet with a minimum width of 60 feet, a minimum depth of 100 feet. If they want to vary from that through an RPD application, they can do that. But the city will ask for amenities in return. You know, if we're going to give up something in terms of standards, we're going to ask for something in return.
Also with the RPDs, what you're looking for is mixed use as far as multifamily with single-family?
It, it depends. They're welcome to propose what they want to propose as far as, you know, innovation is concerned. And it depends on the location. We want to be context-sensitive. If it's adjacent to commercial, we would be open to, you know, we may be open to something like a mixed-use product, but, so it depends. It depends. But it would still require them to meet the goals and objectives of the general plan. And the general plan adopted in 2009 has many, many policies that talk about livable communities, improved architectural quality. So those are the expectations for RPDs and any other residential development.
And you're looking at the presentation, it also looks like with these new developments, it'll allow you the walkways, the bikeways.
Right.
And everything that...
Right. And, you know, we've adopted other documents such as the master plan of part of, you know, trails and bikeways that ask for these things. So here's our chance to implement these things that we want. And that's essentially, that's essentially what the zoning code is. This is an implementing tool of other documents that contain broader policies.
And with these developments, are the builders themselves going to be forming HOAs with these communities, or it's yet to be seen?
It's yet to be seen. It depends. Some of these communities, if they have shared open space or community tot lots or daycare facilities, it may require an HOA to manage these types of amenities. In other cases, there may be opportunities where you have a housing tract with other amenities that doesn't necessarily require the, the management of, of an HOA. So it, it depends.
So in that case, they'll probably hit it in taxes a little bit?
Yeah, but the, there's, when we get to, there is certainly a need to discuss, you know, how these amenities would be maintained and how they would be paid for. That's certainly a, something that's worthy of additional discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments?
I just actually have, have a comment. I just wanted to thank you and the team. You know, having had the liberty of sitting on the actual Architecture and Design Commission, there was a lot of talk about setbacks and how in this area that we do seem to be so focused on the garage concept. And I don't think I'll ever look at another structure, housing structure, the same, you know, having sat on that commission. But I sit you through the, this residential zone update, and I think it's a great job, and it's something that I'm pleased to see us trying to move forward on.
Thanks.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much for the update. So we will, that will be in our, we'll be having a hearing on it in June 11th. You anticipate the next meeting? Public hearings on, on the update?
Yeah, June, June 18th, actually.
Eighteenth. Who do you want to do it on the 11th? Okay. Eighteenth. All right then. And, and part of your outreach has been with a number of agencies, local agencies and interested parties. And I know you mentioned at our staff report meeting that you had had a number of interactions.
Right. We conducted, we conducted a public workshop here at City Hall in February. And later on, we did a presentation before GAVR in, in April, and I think it was well-received.
Very good. All right then. So the next item is director's announcements. Mr. Ludicki?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Tonight, as most of us know, is the, the last meeting of Commissioner Jacobs. He's decided not to reapply for appointment to the commission. And he's certainly, he's served with, let's say, you and I and Raj, I guess, are the, are the three that, that started, I guess, here four years ago. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that and let everyone know that on the, City Council's agenda tomorrow night is the reappointment of the remainder of us. If I read the agenda right, I think we're all included in the recommendation for reappointment. However, it is at the discretion of the mayor to decide who he's going to offer for appointment, and the City Council to acknowledge that and agree to it. So stand by. We'll know what's going on by tomorrow night.
Does this mean I have to get a haircut?
Pardon?
Does this mean I need a haircut?
I... Do you need a haircut? Listen, I've, I've always admired your hair, Mr. Triasiano. We who are follically challenged certainly admire those that can grow it and keep it. I know you don't dye it, though. That is your natural, that's, that's all you. I know it is. Oh, my goodness. At any rate, we've, we've had a lot of fun for the last four years, and I certainly enjoyed serving with you, Dan. And we will, we will definitely miss your presence here and your insight. And we thank you for serving.
Well, if I could say one thing, I'd like to thank you for those comments, but I'd like to thank Brian and your staff and Joe. I think you guys do an incredible job. The balance that you keep, having to please everybody at the same time, keeping all the rules and educating us, especially four years ago when you had seven new members. And Jim was obviously the lone wolf with the knowledge of what was going to happen. So thank you for that. Thanks, Joy, for babysitting us. And thanks to my fellow commissioners. It's been a pleasure. It's been a very educational four years for me. I wish I could have passed on as much knowledge if you guys have passed on to me. And special thanks to Jim. He, I think that Jim has done a great job. Just very professional in what you do. To, like to pass that on. Good luck in the future.
Thank you.
See you at the fair, Dan.
Right. Anyone else care, care to comment?
I said we'll see you at the fair.
You bet. When is the fair? August?
It's in August, I should, yes.
Seventeenth or eighteenth or sixteenth or something like that?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. All right then. Okay. If there's not anything further from anyone? Okay. Public business from the floor. I'll announce public business from the floor, but does not to be, does not appear to be any public here to hear the announcement. So I'm not going to say it. We are going to adjourn then to our special meeting for agenda review on Monday, June 11th, 2012, at 5:30 PM here in the Planning Conference Room at City Hall. And thank you all. And thank you, Dan.